Acting Mayor.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve Acting Mayor.
Who said mayor?
Yes.
It came from here someplace, I don't know.
Good evening, welcome to the Monday, October 2nd, 2017 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Certainly. Acting Honorable Mayor Newman.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Acting Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Betty, very much. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is reports of city officers. Number one, comments by the mayor. We're going to start this evening by reading a resolution into the record. If I may, please. Resolution in recognition of the 100th anniversary of Lake Forest Flowers. Whereas John A. Looby III and Eileen Looby Weber and families of Lake Forest Flowers are celebrating the 100th anniversary of the retail and event florist in 2017. And whereas Lake Forest Flowers has been operating as a flower shop and greenhouse since 1917. And whereas, since they purchased Lake Forest Flowers in 1981, the Looby family and staff have contributed substantially to the everyday occasions and special events of the residents, businesses, and schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the City Council, on behalf of all residents of the City of Lake Forest, congratulates and extends all good wishes to the Looby family and its staff on the joyful occasion of the 100th anniversary of the founding of Lake Forest Flowers. Be it further resolved that the City Council offers its sincere appreciation to Lake Forest Flowers for the years of service to Lake Forest through its community support and engagement in celebrating life's greatest moments through flowers. And asks that the city clerk be, and hereby is directed, to give a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Lake Forest Flowers and the Looby family with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the October 2nd, 2017 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the Loubys please come forward?
Thank you. Thank you. I hope I get at least another 50 years when I like to do this. Thank you.
In honor of the event we have...
Oh, thank you.
For the event, we've got a rose for each of the aldermen and the city staff that are here for their support over the years in helping us be successful in the business. And we certainly thank the community to have the opportunity to be in business in this town. I never envisioned about 40 years ago that I'd be still around doing this for the 100th anniversary. And it's a great day and exciting time, so thank you and thank you for the resolution. Eileen will be at it for a long time yet. Thank you.
Congratulations to the Louby's families. Great accomplishment.
Acting Mayor Newman, can we have a motion to accept the resolution?
I'm sorry, yes.
So moved.
To adopt the resolution, may I hear a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, next on the agenda item. We're going to talk about the Housing Trust Fund Board Report and Recommendation. And I'd like to introduce former Mayor Don Schonheider, who is now chairman of the Housing Trust Fund Board. And he's going to make a small presentation for us. Don, welcome back.
Thanks, Tim, very much. Thank you, Acting Mayor, members of the City Council. It was really difficult for me to not vote on that last resolution, by the way. Just old habits are really hard to break. It is wonderful to be here and just spend a few minutes tonight and talk a little bit about the activities of the Housing Trust Fund Board. Back in May, Mayor Lansing was insightful enough to kind of take a look at the Trust Fund Board and actually look at what it had been doing and what it hadn't been doing, and kind of reconstituted the board. And the board went from seven members to three. And we began meeting on a monthly basis in June, have had three meetings, and I think you'll see we've made some terrific progress. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the Trust Fund Board is actually a standalone board, but is a recommending board of the City Council. Tonight, part of the reason I'm here this evening is also to ask the council to approve a motion that was unanimously passed by the board to allocate some funds for some additional housing and inclusionary housing activities in the community. As you'll see, and you see on the slide, the goal is really to support diversity of housing in the community. Everything from seniors, young families, local institution employees, single parent heads of households. And I'm really proud, and we all should feel proud as a community, that we've had great success in doing that already. I never had to do this when I was up there. So, as I mentioned, we began to meet in June. Our first meeting, we actually looked at and reviewed the role of the Trust Fund Board, the policies. We reviewed with Kathy our the inclusionary housing ordinance that's here in the community. So we really got the board kind of their sea legs a little bit. And the second meeting, we met with representatives from Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Many of you know, SEPA has been a terrific partner for us in our inclusionary and diverse housing efforts here in Lake Forest. We've done six individual homes with them as partners. The city has used dollars from the Housing Trust Fund to support those individual activities. And they've been terrific partners for us going forward. Last week, we also met with representatives from Focus Development. As those of you remember, in the 111 apartment units that Focus is building at Kelm Scott Park, there are 12 inclusionary units. Three of them are two-bedroom, nine of them are one-bedroom. So we spent a good deal of time talking with folks from Focus, as well as representatives from their property management firm, about the process they're going to use to locate potential residents, talk about when the activities to find residents for the inclusionary units will start. We talked a little bit about just overall kind of nuts and bolts, A to Z kind of process as they get started, beginning right after the first year as they deliver their first building. We were fortunate enough also to have the executive director of SEPA with us. She helped us frame some ideas, asked some really good questions, and was very, very beneficial to the board. So going forward, as we look for future meetings and what the board continues to do, obviously, our goal tonight is to ask the council for an approval of up to $335,000 to fund two individual additional projects. As I mentioned, we've done six of them in the community. They've been tremendously successful. Individual residents, single parents, young families. We have a coach at the college and his family and young kids. It's been a great project, been a great partnership with SEPA, and we'd like to continue to do that. We also know that we'll be getting at least two units of inclusionary product from the McKinley Road project, so we need to talk a little bit about that process and how that's going to get started. And then finally, we also will continue on through the balance of the year and into next year. Our goal is to meet with a lot of our partners in the community. So those partners that we want to work with to try to look for inclusionary and diverse housing opportunities, they include the hospital, the schools, the college, corporations, even municipal workers. So we're really eager to kind of push that along. We see some great opportunity to make a real impact, and we're pleased with where we're headed. So tonight, what we're asking the council for is, we want to renew our partnership with SEPA. Again, they've been very, very successful in the activities they've done. We've really been a great, they've been a great partner for us, have been very helpful to staff. So tonight, we're asking for, again, what was unanimously approved by the Housing Trust Fund Board, approval to not exceed $335,000 out of the Housing Trust Fund, targeted for two individual homes at approximately $250,000 or $150,000 each. A service fee for each of those homes paid to SEPA of $15,000. And then we mentioned a moment ago that representatives from SEPA were there to help us in the Focus meeting. We want to engage SEPA over the next year to 18 months on a consultancy basis for a $5,000 fee to help us, again, go through the process of making sure that the inclusionary units in the community are absorbed, we're finding prospective tenants, and good activity there. So we've got a lot of things on the agenda, and they've been a very good resource for us. So just as an FYI, the Trust Fund currently has about $725,000. We anticipate a payment sometime in the first quarter of 2018 of about $650,000, a payment in lieu from Focus tied into Kelm Scott Park. So what we're asking for tonight in total with those funds is just under 25% of the available funds in the Trust Fund, beginning in first quarter of '18. I'm happy to take questions if anyone has any.
Questions, council discussion, go ahead.
I'm just curious with the request for the, I think the partnership is great. Very enthusiastic about it. I think it's one of these win-wins. I think it's wonderful for us, makes our lives, I think, easier because they know exactly what they're doing. This is their business. The $150,000 times two, so are those houses, do we know that there are houses available that can be purchased, or is that hopeful? Is that aspirational, or do we actually have some places in mind?
It's a combination, Alderman, of both. They have, we have some ideas of some places that are targeted. There's nothing imminent, but we think there are some ones that could be done. If you remember, over the last few years, those funding numbers have really gone up. If you remember, the first one I think we did was maybe $60,000 of contribution. They've gone up over 100. The markets change, particularly for homes on the less expensive end. And so we want to make sure that we've got enough adequate funding to be able to do that, but we think there are some opportunities there that hopefully we can capitalize on in the next 12 months or so.
Other comments? Okay, at this point, is there any comments from the public on this matter? Anyone like to come up and talk about this particular item? Seeing none, that will conclude the mayor's comments, Acting Mayor's comments, and we'll move to agenda item number two, comments.
I can't leave here, Acting Mayor. I was told I had to get the money.
Rookie mistake. Okay, if desired by the City Council, we're looking to approve a motion directing the city manager to update and extend the agreement with Community Partners for Affordable Housing to authorize the purchase and improvement of existing single-family homes in Lake Forest and going to support CPAH toward the city's goal of offering a diverse housing stock in almost, in an amount not to exceed 335,000 over a period of 24 months from the date of the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So roll call vote?
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, comments by the city mayor. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Bob Kayley.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the City Council. Before I get to the two items, Susan, while you're up there, we do have two events that are coming up that I really would like to talk about tonight. Event number one is tomorrow night, which is the joint meeting between the City of Lake Forest, School District 67, 115, and the Lake Forest Lake Bluff League of Women Voters, in discussing sort of the impact of the state budget and state financial decisions on the city and on the schools. I'm pleased to report that even though our mayor is ill, that his shoes will be filled by First Ward Alderman Jed Morris. So Jed will be the guest speaker on behalf of the city's presentation tomorrow night. So we encourage everybody to come out, starts 7:00 at Gorton Community Center. So we hope to see everybody there. The second event that I wanted to mention is the one that's occurring on October 11th at Trinity University in Bannockburn. This is a meeting that was put together between Glenview, Northbrook, Deerfield, Bannockburn, and the City of Lake Forest, focusing on sort of the future of freight traffic in and about the Chicago metropolitan area. We have a panel discussion that evening, and it should be very informative for anyone who wants to learn more about what's on the freight lines and what the future of the freight traffic is going to be in the Chicago metropolitan area. And that also is from 7:00 to 8:30 that evening. So that has been on our website, and we've been trying to promote as much as we possibly can, so we hope to see a good turnout that evening, on both evenings, actually. With that, let me turn attention to the published agenda, and the first item is a community spotlight. This weekend is homecoming weekend for Lake Forest College, a very important institution in this community. And we're very fortunate this evening to have the president of Lake Forest College, Stephen Scott. Stephen?
That's Bob. Good evening. Members of the City Council, it's a pleasure to be here and have an opportunity to talk briefly about the college. And I thank you again, City Manager Kayley, for the introduction and for the support that he and the city in so many different ways, and all of you have given the college over many years and continue to do so today. We're very grateful for the relationship we have with you and the support we receive from you in so many different ways. I'll start by saying that this is, every homecoming is special, of course, but this is a special, special one this year because we're celebrating our 160th anniversary this year. So the college was chartered in 1857, and if you do the math, that means this is 160 years later. And a lot's happened over 160 years, from the first graduating class, which had fewer than 10 students at the college. We graduated 375 last May, and our student body is now comfortably above 1,500 students. We're very pleased and proud about that. One of the aspects of the student body that I think sometimes is surprising, probably not to City Councils and I, but to some members of the community, is where our students come from. And the short answer is, they really come from all over, so that we have students at the college now from 44 different states and more than 70 different countries around the world. And that diversity of geography and experience makes it really a great place for students to learn from each other about the experiences they've had and about life in a number of different places. I also have to say, though, just for a moment here, that one of the consequences of that enrollment is basically anytime something happens in the world, we have students from where it happened. So that, for example, this morning, I was in touch with seven or eight different students from Las Vegas who were at the college. And following last night, of course, we were in touch to make sure that they and their families are okay. A week ago, we spent about a day making arrangements to evacuate a student from Puerto Rico after the hurricane hit there. We have many students, of course, from Texas and Florida who were with their families in their homes there affected by Hurricane Harvey. And so those kinds of things, when they happen, come very close to home very quickly at a college like Lake Forest, where our students are coming from as many different places as they do. And that's, I don't want to say that's in any way a downside, but that's an aspect of being in a community like we are, with people from all over, that really, in a way, I think, pretty quickly helps students learn what life can entail and how to deal with some of the different things that happen in those ways. But moving on from that, back to 160 years, as Bob Kayley said, homecoming is this weekend on Friday and Saturday. We expect more than 1,000 alumni of the college back this weekend, who will be with us starting Friday evening for reunions, and then through the day on Saturday. And for anyone here who is interested, and certainly anyone who may be watching tonight, I hope we'll see you at the parade Saturday morning at 11:30, and following that, at 2:00, our football game against Knox College. And I will note for the moment that we are presently 4-0 on our football season. I'm pretty willing to predict that we'll be 5-0 after Saturday, but I'm knocking on wood when I say that. It's a very important game for us at homecoming, and we certainly would love to have many members of the community come out. There's going to be a large crowd, for sure, there always is, but we'd love to have community members there, too. One of the other great things about homecoming this year is that we'll be giving tours of what is still a construction project in process, but that nevertheless is moving toward its conclusion, and that is the Lillard Science Center on our campus, which is the largest capital project we've ever done at $44 million. And we're very grateful to John and Paula Lillard and many other community members and supporters of the college who helped us make that project possible. But it's going to be 130,000 square feet of state-of-the-art science research and classroom space. And not only will that be, I think, of great benefit to our students at the college, more than 40% of whom are now majoring in the sciences, but I think it's going to be a real community asset in a number of ways also, for various kinds of programming we expect to do there, and hope really to have many different kinds of community engagements through that new facility at the college. So that'll be a very exciting thing that we'll be able to introduce many people to this weekend at homecoming. And it will be completed as a project altogether, including a renovation phase by this time next year, really a little earlier so in time for next academic year, it will be entirely done. I'm going to sort of wrap up with just a few comments about the ways in which we at the college try to relate to and connect with the Lake Forest community that we're so proud to be a part of. And one of the things I'll leave is a number of copies of our latest community guide that we mail to everyone in, certainly the Lake Forest community, as well as several communities in the surrounding area. But there are plenty here for certainly every member of City Council, but others who are here tonight who might like to take one. I hope that you've already received them in the mail, but just in case, these detail by no means everything, but a lot of the major events that will be happening at the college this semester. We mail one of these out at the start of every semester to try to educate the community about things that are going on at the college, but to just cite a few things that you would see in here and that are coming up. And I apologize for this, Bob, because tomorrow night, at the same time you've got your important meeting, we have a talk by Rich Cohen, who's the author of the new book, The Chicago Cubs' Story of a Curse. And it's a great book, and he's a great speaker, and for anyone who can be in two places at the same time, I hope you'll come to the college tomorrow night as well as going to the city's forum. But it's an example of the kinds of talks we have at the college regularly and love to have community members come to. In addition to that, this Friday evening, our music program will be doing a concert at the Gorton Center, which, again, we have a very active partnership with, and we're very fortunate to be able to use Gorton's performing facility several times during the course of a year. Summer courses at the college have really burgeoning over the last several years, and so in addition to opportunities during the regular academic year for community members either to take a course or audit a course, there are growing opportunities every summer for students of all ages to engage in as well. And all of those are also all communicated in this way and on our website. Last thing I'm going to touch on, with real thanks in particular to our two aldermen, Prue Beidler and Jeb Morris, is a community dinner program that I know the city, as an entity, has been behind as well. But starting this fall, we have 51 students from, again, a number of different locations outside this area who have signed up to be part of this program that 17 different families in the city have also agreed to be part of. And there's already been, I believe, one dinner with more to come, but three students in each case have gone to one of the 17 homes to have dinner, I think, on a Sunday evening. And really just talk about themselves, the students, about where they come from, how they came to Lake Forest College, what their lives are about, what they're studying, and also learn from families here in town, more about the community that we're all part of. It's a great initiative, really a terrific program, and I'm very grateful to everyone who's been involved in helping make it possible. But a real example of, I think, the way the college and the community can relate so positively together to the benefit of everybody involved. So I won't take more time now, but those are simply several examples of many, many more about how the college is really trying to be not only a good citizen of this town, but really engaged in the community in ways that are important for us and we hope for the community. Happy to take any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'll just thank you again for your support and hope to see you all this weekend at homecoming.
Questions, anyone has? Steve?
I just encourage everybody to sign up for the dinners. It was great. We really had a great time. I hear that the food was very good also, but I'm sure it was, but we'd love to have still more.
So this year's program, and we should really give former Alderman Kathy Waldeck credit for really nudging this forward with staff at the college. So it's a pilot program this year, but the hope is that this will continue, ideally that we will have our same students for the next four, for the next, this year, and the next three. And, but that we might add some each year, because I guess these programs that exist at other colleges, part of the fun is you have students from different classes, and they support each other and so on. So we'll see where it goes, but it was, we had a wonderful time.
I'm glad.
So it was great. Not just that, but I was so impressed with the students who we came in contact with. They are a real credit to your institution. They were fine young men in my experience. But I also have to say, we took them to a Northwestern football game.
There must have been nothing else going on that day.
There was nothing else going on. It was one of your football players as well. But he's very committed to his team at Lake Forest College and was just someone you should be very proud of.
Well, I appreciate it, hon.
He represented your team very well and your college.
That's great. Thank you.
Steve, can I ask you a question? I'm now putting my alum hat on. As you know, I'm a big supporter of the college in liberal arts education. And recently, some information came out, or findings came out from the Brookings Institute about college students and the whole issue of the Constitution, and specifically with respect to First Amendment rights. What kind of conversation is going on at Lake Forest College about that? Because I personally find it disturbing, and hopefully it's a trend that we can reverse, but I don't know what conversations you've had at the college.
No, thanks, Bob. We're actually having regular conversations on this topic and on different aspects of the topic. And I characterize the conversations as revolving around two shared but different values. One of them is a strong belief, deeply strong belief, in the importance of free expression on campus and the sort of contest between ideas that students learn from, and the necessity that ideas be presented freely and without bias so that they can be compared, and students can engage in that dialogue between different forms of thought. At the same time, we also value a strong community in which students are, students and faculty and staff are within reason, courteous to each other, and care about each other, and mutually support each other. So one of the things that we try to, at least I try personally, to focus on is how these two values can be joined. And one can express oneself freely while still paying attention to the words that are used and avoid unnecessary confrontation or inflammation of ideas. So there's a tension between the two things that sometimes surfaces, but I think both are important, and I believe so far, we're negotiating sort of the space between those things pretty well.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? If not, we're hoping for a 5-0 start to the season.
You bet, so am I. I'll leave these just, I mean, if people would like to distribute. Thanks again very much.
Thank you. The second item under my agenda this evening is the Comcast Annual Update. And with us this evening is Frank Dool, the Senior Manager of Government Affairs. Frank, want to come forward, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting me to your meeting. You do receive an annual report from Comcast in January, quite do receive an annual report from Comcast in January. Quite frankly, that's part of the state regulation, and it provides some limited information really on the type and number of escalated complaints you may receive at the city and/or at the Attorney General's Office. I think our story's quite a bit more robust than that, and I appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about it. In looking at customer service overall for Comcast, at the end of 2014, they took a look and they decided they really needed to reinvest internally to make the experience better for all customers, to really change it from an interaction to an overall experience. So they looked all across the platforms of the different departments that might touch a customer, and how to better integrate those and make the experience better. We're in year three of a five-year plan, and in each of those years Comcast is investing $300 million. So it's a billion and a half dollars overall. The first thing we did was hire more people. We hired more customer service reps. We hired more technicians. In addition, we invested very heavily into technology. As in the telecommunications industry, obviously you think of technology as what we provide to our customers. And you have to, because to be successful, you have to be ahead of the curve all the time. But in investing internally, we gave tools to our personnel so that they could better serve customers. One of those things is an app that you may download on your mobile device. It's also available on our website. It's also available on your TV screen, if you have our video service. It's called My Account. You may manage your account totally through that app without ever having to call one of our call centers at the 800 number. You may look at your level of service. You may look at your bill. You may pay a bill. You may look at all of the devices in your home and see that they're functioning properly and at what levels. And if you need to, you may schedule a technician. A nice little aside to that is, a part of that is a section called My Tech. And let's say you schedule an appointment from 10 to 12. Instead of sitting there at 11:45 and kind of wondering, you know, if and when the technician's going to come, if you go on My Tech in the morning, it sort of looks like Pac-Man. You can actually follow the technician as he does his route through the city until he gets to your doorstep. And another nice little feature is, the technician's picture and name is up in the corner, and senior citizens love that as a security measure, because they can look through the window and say, yeah, there's Bob, the technician, and he's right on time. Anything that you do with customer service is only as good as the network that provides it in our business. We constantly upgrade our network, because quite frankly, no one wants less technology. About every six months, and it's very transparent to both the city and to our customers and the residents, we upgrade our system overall. And that's because, obviously, electronics become smaller, more miniaturized. They perform more functions, and they're available to us. So we continually upgrade the network so it provides better service across all of our product platforms. I can tell you, overall, we have a 10-year plan. We're in about year two, where we're going to bring fiber directly to your home. So for those of you who are somewhat familiar with the Comcast network, you will see a node out in the neighborhood, and you know that that node serves several of you and your neighbors' homes. Those nodes are about the size of one of those dormitory refrigerators right now. When we're done, at the end of 10 years or so, it's going to be the size of a thermostat. It's going to be on the wall of your house. It's going to go serve only all of the outlets in your home. So that's one way that the technology is really going to be much faster, much more reliable, and be able to bring you more and more products. If you take a look at our products, residentially, most of you know that we offer video, internet, phone, security service, and this year we added mobile phones. Now, you don't have to use the My Account app. You don't have to go on the website. You certainly don't have to listen to me. You could drive right down the street at 60 and 21. We have a brand-new, relatively brand-new Xfinity store. And in those 6,000 square feet, you could bring your own device, or you can use any of our devices, smartphones, tablets, laptops, computers, television sets. And you can, you will be allowed to have the staff show you how to use any and all of those products and all of the features that those products offer. On the business side, and many people aren't familiar with our commercial side, we offer video, internet, phone, phone systems, and we recently added small business security. I want to take one product as an example. If you look at the internet product, we still offer internet essentials, and we have since 2011. Many of you are familiar, that is our very low-cost internet service for hardship families. We're trying to help bridge the digital divide. On the other end, last year, we launched our 1Gig service. That 1Gig service functions on the existing network. There's no additional construction needed to get the product to your home. If you have an outlet in your home, the 1Gig service will work. We offer it to small business. We offer it to medium-sized business. So I like to say, we offer from IE all the way to 1G. The 1G product, as far as a commercial product goes, we think offers a lot as far as any of your plans you have for economic development in the city. Because 1Gig, obviously, is a very high-speed product. It's available in your home for home businesses. It's available for small business. It's available for medium-sized business. When we talk about things like this, the really nice thing, and the really cool thing, obviously, is innovative technology. Let me give you an example. Many of you have the X1 product in your home. The X1 is the new IP box. It's been out for a few years now. Couple of weeks ago, on NBC, you may very well have watched the telethon for hurricane relief. NBC, as part of Comcast, brought out the Stars. We tried to raise money to help all of these areas, because quite frankly, Houston and Florida are Comcast areas. And we're obviously, like everyone else, worried about Puerto Rico also. From your home, on the X1 box, there was an icon that said hurricane relief. You could press that button and donate automatically. If you have the voice remote, which works with the X1 box, you could have said hurricane relief and donated automatically. That money proactively went to the Red Cross and the other relief agencies. It was immediately available to them, which is what they need, as we've all seen in the media. And your donation would then be reflected in your next month's cable bill. So that's a very small grassroots level of technology and how it can help people's lives. Some really higher-level ones, we have a Smart Office program, which has just launched in the spring. It works for small business. It's a monitoring service, security monitoring service. You think, well, big deal. Well, in some neighborhoods, in Chicago, specifically in Detroit, merchants got together and put a camera on the outside of their storefronts, and they gave their access codes to the police departments, so the police department can monitor the street for them. In Detroit, obviously, a very much more urban area, the crime rate in one year has gone down 40% in the use of this Project Greenlight and the Smart Office product. It has applications in the suburbs. We've talked to, for example, in the spring, there were a rash of automobile burglaries. We talked to a lot of automobile dealers about deploying Smart Office for those dealerships. Another one is called Machine Q. Very high-level. Machine Q takes all kinds of sensors, assembles the data, and that data is then available for you to make decisions. Street lighting, meter reading, usage of streets, in the sense that you may want to determine how you're going to repave them, so on and so forth. So Machine Q is relatively new, and it's a very high-level monitoring system. So for example, let's say if you wanted to see whether the east-side metro station was used more than the west side, and the implications that would have for maintenance, and so on and so forth, that data would then eventually be available to you. So it has all kinds of applications on a municipal level. And those are a lot of the things that we're doing, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I'm sorry to ask this question, but I kind of feel I have to. Could you talk to us about network security at Comcast, and have you had any incursions, and how that's gone for you?
I would suspect that people try to make incursions on our system almost every day, just like they do for everybody else. Comcast, being the leading telecommunications company, we obviously hire and maintain the people, and they develop the technology that allows us to combat that, excuse me, to combat that. From a home viewpoint, when you purchase internet service from Comcast, that all of that product is included in the purchase price of the internet. So all you have to do is add it to your computers and your service.
Thank you.
I have a question. The email client dot Comcast.net, are those emails encrypted, like Gmail and a lot of other email clients?
I don't know. It's an interesting question. I'll research it for you and let you know.
Any other questions?
Frank, do you want to just mention very briefly, as we'll prepare the council in 2018, is, I think, renewal of the franchise agreement. But in the last 20 years or so, there's been a lot of changes in what can be in a franchise agreement, what cannot. So can you sort of just let the council know what they can expect in a year when we come back on the renewal?
Sure. Your franchise is due to expire early in November of 2018. We sent what is called a 626 letter, which is the letter that tells you it's coming due. Those are sent three years in advance. That gives all of us time to prepare for the next renewal, so there's no surprises. Due to all of the federal and state regulation, fully 90% of what we used to negotiate has been preempted under those regulations. But it's important to note that all of the protections are still there. They're incorporated into that local contract, and it's just that the federal and state has the regulatory power on that. So we look forward to sitting down and negotiating with you and coming to a good conclusion.
All right. I'll forewarn you. Don't ask me to regulate fees. We can't do that. If your bill's too high, talk to him. Don't talk to me. Any other questions for Frank? Michelle?
I have one more. This letter that we have in front of us from February 2017, it doesn't have a trend analysis on the types of complaints over time. Do you have any insight that you can share tonight on how the, either by type or in total, how complaints have changed over time?
They really don't fluctuate that much. Typically, and I can tell you why. I mean, this is a report on video service, because that's what you regulate. In a mature market like Lake Forest, your number of customers tends to have, you know, plateaued out. We all typically know, in a mature market, about 50% of the homes typically choose to have service. There are a variety of competitors vying for that service, and therefore, the number of complaints tend to be pretty regular. May go up a little, may go down a little, and I'm not sure that anyone's done the analysis on why.
So for this letter, nothing kind of rose in your mind as far as, you know, what we might be expecting or thinking about or experiencing?
Historically, and manager Kylie hit the nail right on the, you know, hit right on the nail. Historically, out of the total of those complaints, more than 50% are on the bill. And in a competitive market, and we compete every single day, there are many competitors here in the city, the price is really determined by that competition. And our price is determined, we feel, by the value that we offer too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Next on the agenda, comments by council members. Any issues that any council members want to put forward this time? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item four, opportunities for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience tonight? I see one hand. Would you please come forward to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Thank you. Dan Sebold, 560 Ivy Court. I'd like the city council to consider moving item 5.7, which is 770 Wesley Road planned subdivision, out of Omnibus, so that it can be considered on its own merits. This is a project that got a variance. It's nine homes, a subdivision. It's probably the first of its kind in a wetland area. And it just hasn't gotten the vetting that it deserves. In the, Lake Forest leader Neil Milbert wrote an article shortly after the Plan Commission approved it, and there are seven items listed that were, needed to be satisfied before final approval. And I don't think the city has made any comment on that. Item one in particular is the major one, which would be engineering plans in conformance with regulations and standards of the city engineer must be filed with the city. And I think that would be a hydrological study was the main issue there. And also, item eight on the Omnibus, I just would like a clarification from the city if there's a smoking component, both patrons and employees that go along with the Gallery Restaurant that has an outside deck and it's near a residence. Thank you.
It's completely up to the city council with respect to whether you want to remove those two items or not from your Omnibus agenda. I don't know if Vic or Kathy can probably give a quick answer to eight, but I think that the-
That's what I was looking for first, I think.
Yeah, the gallery, I think, falls under the same smoking regulations of every other establishment in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Any other audience members with questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to item, agenda item five, items for Omnibus vote consideration. I'm going to read all 12 of the items here tonight. Number one, as always, if any council members want to remove any of the items, we'll discuss that afterwards. Item number one, approval of the September 5, 2017 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of the September 18, 2017 city council workshop meeting minutes. Number three, check register for the period of August 26 to September 22, 2017. Number four, approval of a proclamation in full support of Illinois Rail Safety Week, September 24 to 30, 2017. Number five, award of a one-year contract renewal with InterDev for information technology support. Number six, waive bidding requirements and approve the purchase of two Stryker ambulance cots. Number seven, consideration of recommendations from the Plan Commission in support of actions related to final approval of the 770 Wesley Road, the Preserve at Wesley, planned preservation subdivision. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval of ordinances as detailed below. Number eight, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit for the Gallery Restaurant. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance. Number nine, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board. First reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number 10, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission. First reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number 11, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. First reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. And number 12, request for city council approval of a resolution to adopt the 2017 Lake County All Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Any questions or comments from council?
Acting Mayor Newman, I'm interested in what Mr. Sebold had to say, and if there were some things that he felt were not, I mean, I heard a little of his concerns, but I didn't hear a lot, and I would like to hear further about what he has to say, if that's appropriate at this point. Is that okay? Should we have done that before?
If that's the case, we can have that item considered separately and move on with the consent agenda on the other matters.
Okay. I wasn't sure exactly what the sequence was, but I felt like there were still some issues left on seven. So the smoking thing is a non, it sounds like, okay, a non-issue, but okay.
Just to reiterate Bob's comment, there is no particular regulations beyond the existing city code regulations affecting the gallery and smoking.
Well, can you refresh us as to what the regular city regulations are regarding smoking as they relate to restaurant facilities?
I can get that information. I believe that we do not allow indoor smoking. That's part of the Illinois Indoor Smoking Prohibition Act. And we also limit the ability to smoke within a certain area of the doorways, which I believe is 15 feet. I don't think that we have extended our regulations beyond the state, but I will confirm that if you have other conversations you want to have in the meantime.
Well, so just to be clear, there is an outdoor eating area. Well, so just to be clear, there is an outdoor eating area associated with this that may be more than 50 feet from the doorways, meaning that there could potentially be some smoking in this outdoor eating area. Is that accurate?
Kathy? Kathy has all the answers.
But I will actually be happy to answer your answer. Section 95.179 of our code prohibits smoking in outdoor seating areas.
Without any limited distance from the door?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. All of our outdoor dining areas would be prohibited, yes.
That answers the question.
There you go.
But if you have anything else you want to say while you're up there.
Well, he stole your thunder, didn't he, Kathy?
Michelle, did you have a question, or was it the same one?
Same one.
Okay. So procedurally, are we removing Item 7?
Pulling 7 out.
And we'll entertain a motion to approve the other 11 items?
So moved.
Have a first, second, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
8 a, 0 n, motion carries.
Thank you, Betty.
Mr. Acting Mayor, maybe before we take up the 770, I do see David Mattoon in the back.
Yes.
I don't know if, David, you want to come forward and get your proclamation?
Yes.
And David, you have to wait there one minute, because I think they're going to take your picture. You shaved before this. 770.
Item 7, right?
Kathy, you want to maybe make a quick presentation on the item?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Newman, members of the council. The subdivision before you, 770 Wesley Road, the Preserve at Wesley, was before the Plan Commission during the preliminary phase in October, November, and December in 2016, before it came to you in January of 2017, at which time you did grant approval of the tentative plat of subdivision. During the tentative phase, extensive technical information is reviewed by the city engineer. And in fact, this is a conservation subdivision, similar to many other subdivisions that the community, that the city council has approved. Everett Farm, Middle Fork Farm, more recently, Oak Knoll Subdivision. This property is covered by the historic residential open space preservation district, which in fact encourages open space to be preserved. In this case, the subdivision is 22 acres. Nine lots are proposed as part of the subdivision and were approved as part of the tentative plat. The nine lots are clustered at the south end of the property, near Wesley Road, and wetlands, prairie, and woodlands are all preserved as part of the subdivision. You have better images in your packet, but the entire property, again, is 22 acres. The lots are clustered in this area. As part of this petition, zone change was requested from R5, minimum lot size of 3 acres, which the city code really identifies as a holding zone. This property is surrounded by properties zoned and developed, consistent with the R4 zoning. This property is, as proposed, is developed consistent with the R4 zoning. The allowed density meets the underlying R4 zoning, so it is very consistent with other approvals granted by the city council. I would be happy to answer. Any questions?
Mr. Acting Mayor, I have been a member of the Board of Lake Forest Open Lands for in excess of 25 years. I am also a past chairman of the Board of Lake Forest Open Lands. During that period when I was chairman, this real estate transaction was before us, and so although I have no direct financial interest in this development, for optical purposes, I would refrain from discussion and from voting on this issue with your permission and with the permission of the rest of the council members. However, I would be happy to answer any clarifying questions because of my direct involvement in this development. Thank you. Is it possible for Mr. Sebold to elaborate a little bit on his concerns about this? Is that appropriate?
Do we really want to get into that conversation?
I'm curious about what he feels wasn't fully explored. I don't know that it needs to be a conversation. Did you say everything you wanted us to hear in your initial comment?
I'll pass.
Okay.
You know, quite frankly, this has received unanimous approval from the Plan Commission. It was done in conjunction with the developer, I think it's Jenco, and for goodness sakes, open lands has been a part of this thing from beginning to end. Given that level of approval and involvement, I'm perfectly satisfied with moving forward on this.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
The natural spaces, wetlands and other, does the development include altering those spaces? Or when we say preservation, does that mean that they will be left in their natural state?
One thing I didn't mention is that the open space, approximately 17 acres, Lake Forest Open Lands will retain ownership of the open space. So yes, it will be preserved. There will be some restoration, some cleanup, some removal of non-native species. Actually, some work already has been done to enhance the existing drainage swales. The property will continue to accept water from the north. There also will be a nature trail. But yes, the open space will be preserved, will remain in the ownership of Lake Forest Open Lands, and we do hope to see them come forward and rezone the open space portion from residential zoning to open area zoning in the near future.
Thank you.
Kathy, on that last point, you know, having a, committed to being open lands, there's nothing now, though, in any of the documents that require that. Are you comfortable with that?
Actually, the density as proposed fully utilizes the underlying density allowed by the R4 zoning district. So there is no potential-
There would not be any alternative but to leave it open lands?
Correct. There is no potential for further subdivision of the property.
And they're not expected any problem getting it redesignated as such?
No.
So we need to entertain a motion to approve this agenda item. Okay, is such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel is recusing herself. Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
They were going to waive first.
I'll waive to the side of a waving first.
Just the motion for, I thought the-
First reading. No. 7 a, 0 n, 1 abstention.
We'll just make sure that the minutes reflect that the motion was for both actions, which I assume the-
The movement intended.
I guess, assuming, is it fair to say that the motion was, as printed in the agenda, to approve both actions with the waiver of first reading?
That wasn't my intent.
I think that was the presumption.
Does she like to restate it?
If the motion, unless there was an objection among the council members, I think that was what the motion was expressed to be. If it wasn't fully articulated in that way, I think this would be the appropriate time to make sure that we're all on the same page.
That was my intent, to move as provided in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda Item 6, Ordinances. First item under this agenda item is, number 1, Approval of an Ordinance Amending City Code Relating to the Real Estate Transfer Taxes. Waive first reading and grant final approval. Presentation by Elizabeth Hollup, Finance Director.
Good evening. Since the City Council approved and updated city code in January of 2015, city staff members and the city attorney have worked on further updates and amendments to various sections of the code as time has progressed. The proposed ordinance before you this evening would amend the city code section on real estate transfer tax. For the most part, those are minor wording revisions suggested by the city attorney or modest changes in the language to reflect current practice. There is one substantive change, the most substantive change in the ordinance relates to appeal procedures. And the city council will likely recall that in April, an amendment to Section 39166 was approved by the city council to allow for hardship provisions to be considered for appeals for the refund of real estate transfer tax when a property is sold and purchased within Lake Forest. At that time, the city council asked staff and the city attorney to consider further revisions to that section as part of the comprehensive amendments. So because the Personnel Compensation and Administration Committee hears the appeals per the city code, we brought this item to the PCA committee meeting in July with a few options, and the PCA committee recommends, and the ordinance before you provides, that it divides both appeals and variances and allows, per the code, a variance from the one-year limitations under the refund provisions be extended to two years at the city manager's discretion, if that is the sole item preventing them from a refund. And any revisions to extend the time period beyond two years would still be considered by the Personnel Compensation and Administration Committee.
Your maximum?
Pardon me?
With the three-year maximum?
Yes, that is correct. The final section under 39166 limits the total variance to three years, as drafted and proposed.
As I understand it, if it's between the one and two years, it goes to the city manager, but there, if the city manager, for example, denies it, there's a right to appeal to the PCA committee?
That's correct.
It's a nice accommodation to the two instances that we've had over the last several months.
Excellent. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have regarding the post-ordinance.
Yeah, I have some, and I would have, I probably should have posted you on this, Elizabeth, but I didn't get a call until after I was over here for the PPL meeting, and I got in a call from the Director of Government Affairs for the Illinois Realtors Association or something. And I returned the call, and he sent me an email, and he asked some, what I thought were some poignant questions. And I certainly was part of the PCA and approved us moving forward. Now I'm questioning some of our, the first question was, property owners that exceed the one-year window but are within two years can appeal for hardship purposes to the city manager? I guess I'm wondering, well, like, this is the language, I think, that's in the, whatever was in our packet, but for some reason, I can't get into my Dropbox to see it. But it doesn't seem to me that this should be a hardship. It should be a, if somebody, I mean, in this day and age, given this real estate market, not being able to sell, I mean, you can, a lot of people are buying homes and then putting their houses up for sale, and they're not able to sell them within whatever, within 12 months, 14 months, 16 months. Quite frankly, this is not a hardship anymore. It seems to be more reality, so I'm quarreling a little bit with the word hardship. The other point, since I'm just reading from his, "In either case, the taxpayer seemingly must notify the city in advance of the expiration of the one-year window that an appeal or variance is likely to be forthcoming." That just has a bit of an onerous kind of feeling to me. I mean, here I am, I've got my house up for sale, I'm worried, I'm probably not even thinking transfer tax, that might even, not even enter into the equation until I get ready to go to settlement, and I'm looking at this and goes, oh, gosh, you know, I missed that, I missed that before the whatever. I mean, it seems to me to be, I mean, I've bought and sold a lot of homes, and that's something you see, it slaps you in the face kind of in closing. Sometimes it might be coming up, quite frankly, in the negotiation, but quite frankly, to have to notify the city in advance of the expiration, you know, of the one-year window seems to be a little rough, again, considering this real estate market. And then the other is, such appeals or variances must be made within 30 days of closing. I'm thinking that there's a lot of people who would close, you know, 60 days, it wouldn't occur to them until they're talking to a friend. You know, they're saying, well, you know, I really, it really burns me up, I missed that window in terms of transfer, you know, the transfer tax thing, and somebody, you know, like, would approach me as the alderman, you know, and it's been whatever, 60 days, and I'd say, well, don't worry about it. I mean, you know, we're doing these things now within two years. I'm thinking that we've got perhaps too much language in here, and we ought to go back to our original conversation of just going, anything under two years? You don't do it? The other thing I'm wondering is, there's some people that wouldn't even know to do this at all. They think, yeah, I missed the window. Ah, man, isn't that silly? It cost me thousands, you know, thousands of dollars. They might not ever find out about it, even though it's the intent of those who crafted that one-year language when the ordinance was adopted, to be forgiving for Lake Forest residents in that regard, and that was one of the reasons for the selling of the transfer tax. And this kind of takes away a bit of that, and I'm just wondering whether we shouldn't go to a flat, that flat two-year window for a while, until the market, it's been done before, we went through a two-year window, and then all of a sudden, the market got normalized again, and we went back to the one-year window, which was the original intent. That's all I've got to say.
Following up on Jack's comments, Elizabeth, could you tell us what percentage of people, if we stay with the one-year is the baseline, is what we, you know, the standard, what percentage of people would be impacted, or by sellers would be impacted by the real estate transfer tax thing?
We actually don't know. That would take a manual process of going back through the applications.
Figure out, okay.
And one reason I believe that the PCA committee moved away from the flat two years was the financial impact, because we would be required to go back, do that review, and book that as a liability, reducing revenue this year by that amount. So it seemed burdensome, and so we thought this provision of allowing the city manager administrative authority to do that would allow that flexibility, but not necessitate the accounting adjustment.
Elizabeth, is it really that onerous with just the one, in terms of revenue recognition, for adding an additional year?
Depending on whether it's retroactive or prospective. If that two-year was-
Always be retroactive, wouldn't you?
Well, if the two-year window went back to the period of time when the two-year was closed back to one, that would be a number more of years. If it's prospective, then we would only go back one year through the applications.
I'm not so sure I just under, let me see. So as long as you're within the two years, so what you're saying, your concern would be, five years out, this person would hear about it, and then they'd want to go back and get their money back because it happened after 18 months and not 24 months? Is that what you're saying?
Right. The concern is that there are people eligible between those two periods of time when the window was two years. And would those individuals be eligible for the refund? That, in my mind, would be retroactive, but if it was solely prospective, then it would be limited to a one-year period.
Sure. And we have absolutely no data, like, if I ask you, how many people slipped between the cracks in the last year? Meaning, they were, they sold their house after 14 months, or after 15 months, or 18 months, but didn't apply for the, we'll say, the exception? You have no, you have absolutely no records that could allow you to determine that?
No. What we would have to do is go through each application to see whether or not they stayed in Lake Forest, which would make them eligible, and then determine whether or not they applied and received a refund. and received a refund, and if not, they would be potentially eligible.
Okay. I'm wondering then, I understand, I'm wondering then if we just shouldn't get rid of this within 30 days of closing thing? And I guess this is kind of, I was gonna say, get rid of the word hardship, I guess that's not really all that important. Quite frankly, it's just the way the thing is scripted. And then this one thing of notifying the city in advance of the expiration of the one-year window, just get those, get that stuff out of there, just so it makes it less onerous, you know, for those, you know, there's, there's too many, there's too many catch-22s in here, I guess is what I'm, what I'm saying.
Did we ever talk about a possible sunset provision, where there's some point in time where you've just gone too long and the refund is no longer available to you? You know, I think to some degree, after three years, if you haven't sold your house, it's a price issue that you haven't really dealt with, and is that our problem? So...
And I think, Alderman, that's, was sort of the conversation at the PCA, because keep in mind, I think we are the exception in offering this at all.
Right.
Most communities, this isn't even an option.
That's why I think a sunset provision might make sense. There's some point at which the burden is really on you to come up with a realistic price to sell your house.
Right.
And from an accounting standpoint, we have to have clarity at some point.
Right. And certainly, I think to Alderman Reisenberg's question, that we have done a very good job in, in Lake Forest, educating both the agents as well as the attorneys who do a significant majority of the closings, the real estate closings, they are very much aware of this. So we can move it from 30 to 60 days if you think that that would provide a little more time for people, but those people who are selling homes know exactly what the rules are in Lake Forest, and they're not unaware of it by any stretch of the imagination. But we can certainly widen that period of time. And I'll let the, I think, city attorney address the question about sort of advanced notice and how that works.
I think the advanced notice is, is a little onerous. I think a lot of people would trip up on, on that advanced notice issue.
I was curious as to know what the logic was behind it, so I think maybe we can get an explanation there.
The reason to give the advanced notice, i.e. the notice before the one-year period expires, is that we're able to better understand what we put into the, the hard dollars, if you will, versus the still contingent dollars from our real estate transfer tax fund. Whether that's a, an ultimate concern is for the council to decide, but I think from the, the discussion I've had with the Finance Department, at some point, they want to be able to put it in the right column of the ledger. And if they don't know that someone is going to be applying after the one-year period, but sometime before, three years, that leaves the, the potential that monies might have been shifted and then have to be shifted back. So it does create some potential auditing issues and the like. That, that was really the, I think, the primary reason. If Elizabeth remembers other bases for it, I think that was it, though.
No, I think that's it.
Because keep in mind, I guess, from a practical standpoint, keep in mind that your capital improvement fund is funded from these dollars. So I think what Elizabeth, in real dollars, what, or in layman's terms, what Elizabeth is saying is that if there is this window, you can't spend that money.
Right.
Because there is this opportunity for someone to come back in. So we would have to sort of rethink our capital improvement budget and not fund a lot of these projects, simply because we wouldn't know if we would actually have to have the money. And what we'd have to do is do a rolling three years, and we'd have to literally, for the next two years, do nothing, and then we could start actually obligating dollars that are being paid for today, if that makes sense.
So Elizabeth, to gather this data, you'd have to go look at every transaction for the last few years. I mean, it's hundreds of transactions and determine which might be applicable.
With the language as proposed, we would not change our accounting procedures, because people would only receive a refund if a variance was given under the code language. So we would stick with the one-year, and we would move, we would not change accounting. But if the, if the one-year window was automatically extended for everyone, then that's, that would require the review.
With the, I guess if I had, I've got three issues here. So if I would prioritize them, I think the issue of must notify the city in advance of the expiration of a one-year window, that an appeal or variance is likely to be forthcoming, would be my number-one issue of things that could, that could slip between the cracks. The word hardship, I guess, that's fluff. The other one would be the within 30 days of closing. I guess the only one that I'm really struggling with is the, the advanced notification of the one-year window. Because I think there's some comment here, is you're right, if you go to closing and it's within, you know, you know you missed the window, there's a high likelihood that you're going to have an attorney at closing, and he's gonna, he should, he and the real estate agent, one of the others should be, be able to notify you, hey, you've got 30 days, you've got 30 days to apply, so you better get cracking on that. But this thing about the advanced notification, I think, is a little, get rid of it.
To follow up on, with Jack's comment on this, his number-one item, if you look at experience here, you know, we haven't had that many applications, or people, to your knowledge, that had a situation where they bought a home, and it's been more than a year that they've carried their second home, that they would apply in the two-to-three year, or the one-to-two-year period, or even now, the two-to-three-year period. So we're really not, based upon experience, not talking about significant dollars that may be impacted if someone does come back without the advanced notice that Jack's talking about, a year and a half to say, give me my $2,000, and it's a $2,000 cap.
Right.
So is it that significant from a monetary standpoint, based upon experience?
If that language was not here, if that was stricken from the proposed ordinance, we would not change our accounting procedures. We would continue on, because we would see it as a rare occurrence that that would, would happen.
I think Jack's suggestion is good. Let's just delete that and not impose that as a requirement. And whether on your point number two, Jack, whether you wanted to go with a 60-day window, I'm comfortable with 30, but 60, I'd be comfortable with two.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Why not? I mean, it's not, it's not relevant, is it? If you go to 60, 30?
Go to 60? No.
Yeah. You're all right with that, Elizabeth. Whatever's okay with you.
At this moment, we have an opportunity for public comment on this ordinance. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, coming back to the ordinance, are we looking for a motion as amended?
Well, you have two options. You can approve first and waive second amended, or you could approve first reading amended and then see the final language before second reading.
Let's just, you know, redo the second, the latter.
Yeah, the, the second option.
That we not waive the first reading, that we simply, you know, ask for a redraft based upon the amendments being proposed, and not waive first reading.
Okay.
I'd be willing to make that motion if we're ready to entertain a motion.
I believe so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
This can just be a voice for first reading.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next on the agenda is new business. Agenda item seven, number one, discussion of city council role in matters before the board and commissions. I'll refer back to city manager Kylie to introduce city attorney Filippini.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor Newman and members of city council. Believe it or not, this item comes up about every, maybe seven years, because when you really look at the role of a, of an alderman, it is legislative, but in some cases, it can be judicial. And I'll let Vic get into the specifics about that. But I think it's, it can be challenging at times, particularly living so close to Chicago, because Chicago's rules are very different than other municipalities in the state of Illinois. But the reason that we bring this up is that there are some due process issues related to this. So we want to make sure that the aldermen are very clear about what their role is for any item that is pending before a planning commission, a zoning board, that really has some procedural issues that have been established under Illinois law. So with that, let me turn this over to the city attorney. He did prepare a memo that was made available to you earlier today on this matter, and he can answer then any other questions that you might have.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Newman and members of the council. Illinois is a little bit of an odd bird in this realm, primarily because of a decision that came down about 15 years ago and some subsequent legislation. But the long and the short of it is that when we are in the zoning and land use context, we are operating under rules that are not our typical legislative rules. You know, when you're considering whether to have a ban on smoking, that's something that is purely in the legislative realm. When you're considering your budget, that's something in the purely legislative realm. For decades, zoning was within that same bucket, but as I say, 15 years ago, there was a court case here in Illinois that the court said, no, it's now in a quasi-judicial role. And as soon as you went into that quasi-judicial realm, you changed hats. And when you changed hats, you also had to change your conduct vis-à-vis those types of procedures. And the, the essence of it is, is that your role now is acting in a quasi-judicial fashion as far as the courts are concerned. And that means that you also have the opportunity, whether you intend to or not, to potentially violate some of the standard rules for quasi-judicial proceedings, one of those being ex parte contacts, that is, contacts with someone about a matter that's coming before you, but outside of the pre-established standards. The good news is that ex parte contacts are not automatically going to taint the process. The bad news is, is that they can, and there's our, there are standards as to how a court will evaluate that as really a matter of whether it creates prejudice. To avoid running into that risk and that realm of, is it prejudicial or not, we have long encouraged the members, both of our hearing bodies and of the city council, to avoid ex parte contacts to the greatest extent that you can, and to exercise a discipline in terms of when you've had those kinds of contacts in the context of a procedure, to disclose that and declare whether or not it will have had any impact on your objectivity and impartiality. So that is the mechanism. You've probably seen it, and if you've served on some of our subsidiary bodies, you've probably even had an opportunity to see it in action, or maybe even had an opportunity to practice it, where that kind of disclosure is routine. Less so with the city council, because your role is different, and many of our land use decisions come to you on a consent agenda. So that, that is perhaps something that is not as familiar to you as it would be for the members of the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, for example, but that is still the same basic set of rules that apply. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to address them.
Vic, what's the intersection? This is, I mean, I know the phrase, but I realize it's a legal phrase, it's not one that shows up in my life a lot, ex parte. On my previous board work, which has not been quite like this, there's always conflict of interest things that we sign and so on. Can you make the distinction between conflict of interest and ex parte conversations and so on?
First, let me say that private entities versus governmental entities altogether different. I'll get to that in a moment. But conflict of interest usually is where you have some kind of financial stake
Yeah.
in the outcome. And you shouldn't be voting on it if you are tainted in that way. That applies fairly consistently across the line of private and public. In public, however, you have this constitution thing hanging over your head, and that also then creates the constitutional due process issue that you have to be mindful of. Ex parte contacts may be embedded in bylaws of an organization or their articles of incorporation, but it is there whether or not stated for a governmental unit.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Vic, just for the edification of everyone on this panel, some lawyers and non-lawyers, can you just elaborate a little bit about how ex parte communications may violate the due process clause of the Constitution, which is really what we're talking about?
Sure. The fundamental rule of due process, the procedural due process element that we're focused on, is that people aren't entitled to a fair hearing, a fair proceeding. And if there are rules for moving forward, and one party follows the rules, and another interested party does not, and they try to go and run the process, then that has the risk of being fundamentally unfair. People are not on an even playing field. Now, when you have a public issue, you can't contain all of the potential inputs that you are going to get as a member of a public body. But you do have to make good efforts to insulate yourself as best as possible. You know, the, the age-old example is, you're in the grocery store line, you can't lose it, you can't lose your spot, and you get somebody who starts to beat your ear about the issue before you. You know, you can ask them politely, I'm really not at liberty to discuss this with you, because it's still going to come before me, but that doesn't mean someone's going to stop talking, and, you know, you're just sort of a captive audience. That doesn't mean, although it is technically an ex parte contact, that is, it's outside of the, the procedure that's been established, it doesn't mean that it's going to taint the process. It does mean that you need to take special actions, and that's why we do recommend the notion of disclosure and statement as to your ability to remain objective when that comes up.
This is a subject that I have a great deal of interest in, because I think it is one that doesn't lend itself to easy answers, and I'll elaborate. I've already had discussions with the city manager and city attorney on it. And I do recognize, you do have this one basic tenet that says, our citizens should be entitled to, without even going to the constitutional due process argument, to a fair, equitable hearing before our boards and commissions. And we should be expecting the individuals that sit on those boards and commissions to be impartial, have no conflicts of interest, to make their own independent judgments. We also have another very important tenet here, and that's the, what I'll call, right of free speech. And it is buried in the Constitution, just like due process is, the right to petition government, the right to make your point to your alderman. I think those are constitutional rights, besides the fact, I think, our citizens expect that. And I've only been in the job for nine months, but certainly, I've seen enough in that nine months to say that when there's a key, important, significant topic, the people do want to reach out to the alderman. And I don't see that in and of itself as violating that first tenet. Now, we can start taking it to the next step, and that's where you go into that ex parte. If you say that this alderman have to put up a barrier and say, we cannot talk to any interested homeowner about this concept, whether it's in the grocery line or wherever, I think we're going way too far, and we don't have to do it. Again, we want to make sure that the boards and commissions are impartial, have a hearing on the record, and make their judgments based upon that, just like we should be doing it, too. But I think we do have a role as an alderman to interact with our citizens. We should not be telling them how we're going to vote on that issue before us, because, one, the issue's not before us, two, we don't know whether it ever come before us, and three, if and when it does, we don't know what the issues will be. And we should afford the petitioner the opportunity for a full hearing. And I would expect all of us to be able to say, And I would expect all of us to be able to say, I'm going to attend this hearing, this meeting, this session, with an open mind, independent judgment. And the fact that I might have talked to five homeowners, 10 homeowners, or 100 of them, I might have seen some petitions they've circulated, I might have read something in the opinion in the newspaper, that doesn't taint me, and I don't think it violates anything. Because the standard, Vic, and you can articulate it here, that if it goes before a court, if a petitioner says it was denied because I talked to some homeowner, you know, that's not egregious, that's not arbitrary, that's not capricious, that's not prejudiced. When I can say that I listened to him, I listened to the facts, and I made the decision based upon those facts. So I'd hate for this discussion to end up by all of us thinking, you know, we can no longer communicate with our citizens on important issues that, albeit are not before the council yet, but are going through the process. And we should reinforce that with the people, that they should, their focus should be not on the council members, but on the process that we have on the Plan Commission, or the Board of Review, or the zoning. And they should be working in that committee session to try and persuade them. But to cut off communication simply saying it's ex parte, it's with an interested party, I have trouble going that far.
Well, Vic, are you saying, I'm sorry, Randy, go ahead.
Just general comments. Number one, consider me edified. As I sit and listen to this, I don't think it's as complicated as we're making it appear. It's an issue of not being a premature advocate for a position of parties involved, whether they're a subset of our constituencies. I mean, listening is quite different from advocating. And advocating in general terms, saying—
Your mic go off.
I'm sorry?
Your mic go off.
I think it's worse now. Maybe I just need to speak into the mic. So, you know, from my perspective, there's quite a difference between listening and acquiring information and becoming a premature advocate for a position, especially knowing that constituencies, your constituencies, and I'm not referring to you individually, have different viewpoints. And so, taking an early position or being perceived to take an early position about a very vocal subset of the constituency is problematic from my viewpoint. I mean, I'm more than happy to listen, and I read tons of emails, and most of which I don't respond to, mostly because they rarely have questions in them, they're just statements. But it doesn't mean I'm not acquiring the information. On the other hand, being perceived as going out and becoming, early in a process, an advocate for a position, or being perceived to be an advocate of a position, I think is the problem. And I don't, I separate listening to what people have to say from having people insist that you become, early on, a proponent of this position. And that's what we subject ourselves sometimes, by meeting with small groups of people repeatedly or in a way that is clearly perceived as becoming an advocate for their position within a conflict.
Vic? The legalese confuses me. Practicality, there's a very clear difference between being on a board and commission and being on city council. Being on a board or commission, I always felt that I was a subsection of the city. I kind of worked for the city. I helped the city analyze an issue. I also heard public testimony, and along with my constituents, we made a judgment on a recommendation that we would make the city council on how to proceed. I rarely ever, when I was on the Plan Commission or the chairman of the Plan Commission, met with residents regarding an issue. If they came to me, I sent them back to Kathy. And then Kathy, because Kathy was the accumulator of the fact background, Kathy was the accumulator of the strengths and the weaknesses, and kind of put together the proposal and helped us move forward, which we would occasionally change. But quite frankly, meeting with constituents, meeting with residents when you were on one of the boards or commissions was kind of inappropriate, quite frankly, and got in your way. And at various times, if you ever did that, you'd almost have to do the ex parte, you know, comments or whatever at the beginning of the meeting. City council, very different thing. I feel like I'm a member of the House of Representatives. I feel like I'm working for the people. I feel like I am the voice of the people to the city, not necessarily a subsection of the city. Very different role. I mean, Randy and I meet with constituents maybe often, you know, particularly when we're doing Laurel and Western. And now with the train situation, you know, I get a lot of requests to meet with the residents. And I generally do it, because I think that's my job. And I listen, and I try, I try not to take a point, I certainly try not to take a point of view, because quite frankly, I never know until I hear the final testimony when it comes before us which way I'm going to go. Because my mind changes. My mind used to change at the Plan Commission. I'd walk in, I mean, I am often wrong, but I'm clearly never uncertain. So I have a point of view on everything, at any time, okay? But I reserve the right to change it. And that often happens when you finally get to the final deliberation. So in our role here, I think meeting with the residents is helpful to our form of governance, because they think they have a voice into the city, and that's our job, to help them navigate the bureaucracy, so to speak, even though I don't think you are a bureaucracy. So I think, I view this as two very different roles. And certainly, meeting with the people, I've never even thought that I had any ex parte comments or whatever. To tell you the truth, I never knew what the hell that meant anyhow. So that's all I got to say.
Giving people a voice is quite different from becoming their voice, however.
Yes.
And that's the distinction that I think needs to be made when we do this, is that it can't be perceived, and we can't lead constituents to believe that by coming to them that we are an advocate for their position. I mean, you know, bringing their viewpoints to the fore is perfectly appropriate. Taking their side prematurely before council has deliberations on the facts in front of it is problematic at its—
Fast. That's a great point. One final comment that I didn't mention, meeting, the warning about meeting with constituents is, don't go native.
What do you mean?
Don't go native. Don't join them. Don't join them. You represent, go native. Yeah, I mean, it's like—
Don't go naked either. I would discourage that.
Yeah. Well, it's all part of that comment that Randy made earlier.
That's a different set of problems, but a problem we should avoid.
Yeah, right. I mean, you know, don't join in and, you know, okay, you know, we're going to take this, we're going to go in the madness. No, 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 no. You kind of help them maneuver through the process without taking sides, because you don't know in the final minute that—besides that, you've got to manage expectations.
Mr. Sainz, I hope you can find a way to incorporate Alderman Riesenberg's comments about his opinions into one of your articles.
Yeah.
All right, this is a discussion item odling.
This will be right up there with Pujol.
You still have a couple people—
Let's get a couple of final comments here. Michelle?
I would just add, from my perspective, it's extremely important that we meet with residents whenever they ask us to meet. I have one luxury as a city councilman, and that is, I don't have to make any decision until it's in front of me. So I don't, because I don't know what I'm going to decide until I see all of the facts. But meeting with the residents, they want that. That's why we're here. So to not meet with them, I think, is a breach of duty, simply.
I guess, I'm finding this a very interesting discussion, and I am inclined to agree with how important I think it is to meet with the residents without necessarily taking a position, or ever taking a position, particularly because there are enough issues in this town that I don't actually know enough about, that I'm trying to inform myself any way I can. And candidly, I'm like Randy, I read a lot of emails, but I don't always find that they offer illumination on a subject that sometimes, you know, finding a little calmer context and learning from people, particularly in their own neighborhoods where the issue is impacting them, can offer a great deal more insight. I have to honestly say, I'm curious about if, and this may be a completely inappropriate question, but it is definitely on my mind, do our boards and commissions feel that we're getting in the way of their work? And if that's the case, if this discussion has stemmed from that, then I think that's a completely different discussion. If it appears that we are making their decision-making process more complicated, then I think we need to hear that, and we need to decide, come to some decisions about how we meet, the kinds of things we meet. Then I think there are procedural things that require more than an informal discussion now. But I don't know if that's the case, so I don't know who wants to answer that, if anybody, but—
If I might, a couple of points. First, this came up because of something that I became informed of, and it doesn't have any relationship to whether or not there's been an impact on any of our boards or commissions. There have been lawsuits filed on the basis that there was an unfair process. And sometimes, the things that have been the trigger of that is that there's a claim, and I actually had one of these myself, where somebody's claim was that they got to the alderman, literally, those were the words, "got to." We live in Illinois, so put that in context. I will tell you that we are talking about a fairly limited thing, and it's based on a specific Illinois Supreme Court case. It's not all of your activities as a council member. It is land use. And the reason why is that we have a series of competing constitutional interests involved in land use. We have people whose fundamental property rights are at stake. We have First Amendment rights. We have access to government rights. One way to navigate that somewhat difficult field is to recognize that people can petition government, but we have procedures for doing that. People do have First Amendment rights, that's a right to speak. It's not a right to necessarily engage in a conversation. They have most certainly the ability to share with you in whatever manner they desire to do it, but you can always encourage them, and I would, in fact, encourage you to perhaps encourage them, to come to the council. Why? Because that is a forum in which not only is the individual alderman informed, but all of you. And I remind you that individually, none of you have any authority, other than the citizen's arrest one that I don't know if anyone's ever exercised. It's collectively that you have a great deal of authority, and that's why it's important to try to bring that information to the collective city council. The other thing that that does, if it's in a proper procedure, it also gives the affected property owner, whether it's affected as the applicant or affected as a neighbor, the opportunity to hear that and to respond to all of you about it, so you can be fully informed. The zoning world, I will tell you, up until 2002, was exactly as Jack had articulated. It was like Congress. You know, you went and you did your constituent work, you may not have done it in a public setting, and you came in and you may have already gotten your alignments of where things are. Since 2002, that is not viewed, I should say, it is not clearly viewed as an appropriate means of dealing with land use issues. And are we going to get in trouble? The odds are no. What's the best way to avoid trouble? Is to try to channel conversations in the appropriate fora that we have created for land use petitions. We have public hearings, we have opportunities to comment before the city council, and we have public meetings. All of those things are to encourage that type of conversation. I guess the only other thing that I would note is that this is not intended to preclude you in any way from doing your job as alderman and members of the city council, but it's a way of trying to help you manage the competing avenues of communication you get in a way that does not affect or potentially affect the established procedures and opportunities for exercising rights that you've created through your ordinances and that exist under the state of Illinois.
Can I just quickly respond to Alderman Biedler's question? I think there's maybe a couple of warning signs that I would suggest and I would throw out there. And number one, just as a longstanding policy, and I believe this is still the practice today, is members of city council did not come before boards and commissions. They did not sit in the room, and they certainly didn't appear before them for any, you know, appearance of trying to sway or influence the decision or the conversation. But I know Alderman Bushman and Marino were faced with a situation in the fourth ward meeting where people were saying, where do you stand on this issue? And I think that they had very appropriate responses to them, which is, it's not before us, and it would be inappropriate for us to take a position. I think to sort of piggyback on Alderman's tax point is, you have to be careful to educate and not advocate, because I am certainly a big believer in the process. And I think there is a reason that they are approaching you. They are trying to circumvent the process. It's plain and simple. And many times, they don't understand what the process is. And so the role of the alderman, I think, is to help them understand the process, importantly, help them understand what your role is in the process. And if they understand that, then they will, I think, participate in the process, because I think without that, and what we're starting to see more, and I say "we," Kathy and I, is people not coming to the Plan Commission, or the Zoning Board, or the Building Review Board, or the Historic Preservation Commission, and they are going directly to you. And that's where I think we collectively have a responsibility to reinforce to them that there is a process in the city council, or in the city of Lake Forest, and it has worked very, very well for a long time, and we are going to adhere to that process. And, you know, going back to, I think, Steve Scott's comments earlier, is part of the reason for the process is to get two sides together that may not necessarily agree to talk, and that the board and commission sort of mediates that conversation. And that's why very seldom is original petition that comes before the city the same petition that comes before the city council. That's the importance of the process. And that's why I think we need to reinforce the process and make sure, as Alderman Bushman and Marino did at the fourth ward, they say, it would be inappropriate and premature for us to comment right now on this, but we really encourage you to go to the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board, whatever the case might be, and participate in the process.
Bob, would you say that you think that process is, I mean, I think we all have a sense of it. We certainly know, as Jack pointed out, or maybe Michelle, until it comes to us, we don't actually, there's not a decision point required. So we know that, we sort of know where we are at that point of the process. Do you think this is spelled out clearly enough for both residents and maybe for us? I mean, is there a single document that says this is how, you know, I guess I'm thinking of how a bill becomes a law, but obviously, it's not the same thing, quite. But, you know, this is the petition process, these are the commissions it might go to. I mean, even a visual of that, do we? Kathy, is there such a thing? I know a lot of this is in the Community Development Department. I mean, I just feel like if we were all operating from the same document, I don't know.
Well, while Kathy is coming up to the podium, I will say that part of the problem, I think, Alderman Biedler, that we have, is that many residents might only come once in their entire career in Lake Forest before a board or commission, when there is an issue. And so they're not going to take the time to get themselves fully educated on what all the processes are. And also keep in mind, you might be before two boards on a single petition. And so, you know, are you going to come before the Plan Commission and the Building Review Board? But I dare say that part of what I think, and this is just my personal feeling, is that part of the reason that people go to you directly is they want to circumvent the process and get the outcome that they're looking for without doing the work. They don't want to go to three or four Plan Commissions. We heard this evening about 770 Wesley. I mean, there was probably 30 hours of testimony before the Plan Commission, and, you know, do I want to sit through 30 hours? We heard this evening about 770 Wesley. I mean, there was probably 30 hours of testimony before the plan commission, and, you know, do I want to sit through 30 hours of meetings? And in that case, maybe I might become educated on things I didn't know? Or do I want to just go to you and try and stop it because I don't like it? And I think that's, that's the challenge, I think, that we have in this process, but I'll now defer to Kathy to say, what do we do to educate the public?
Well, wait, before you go to Kathy, I just want to take a little bit of exception to residents circumventing the process. I think they don't know the process.
That's what I think.
And, and that feeds into what Kathy is maybe about to say. They don't know the process, just like people don't know how local government operates versus state or national governments. So they assume, as we do as citizens of Illinois and citizens of the United States, that you go to your representative. How, I mean, how many people here know who their ward person is on any of the plan commissions? They don't. They don't understand this process and assume, I mean, if I have, if there's legislation before the Illinois legislature, I'm calling Julie Morrison. And so they assume that they call their alderman. So I don't think they're trying to circumvent the process. I know, that, that puts more intent on, on sort of a devious intent on what they're doing. I think they're trying to understand the process and desperately trying to talk to someone about their viewpoint of that process. And so I'm comforted by the fact that Vic is saying that these, you know, we have to be very cautious, but mostly just in the land use context.
I will, let me make sure that I even put a sharper point on that. It's not just in the land use context, it's only when there's an application filed. So there may be an issue that, you know, it's heading up steam, but there's no application filed. At that point, you still have the ability to be in a more interactive role with your constituents. It's when that application is filed, that's when the due process rights are engaged.
That's why...
And that's, that's where you have to recognize the switches on.
Right. That's why I asked you to elaborate on due process. It only applies in certain circumstances when we're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. And, you know, I use, as an example, the recent meeting that Mike Strong and I had with residents on Beverly on the comm ed issue. We certainly were interacting with neighbors who had some very serious concerns and, you know, no one objected to that. Those types of meetings, I think, are perfectly fine and perfectly appropriate. So, you know, I think that this is a very limited area of application, and I'm just delighted to hear this back and forth so that we all can have an understanding of when it applies and when it doesn't, so.
Thank you.
How would we know when an application's been filed, though? Or is that what you said?
Well, you receive copies of all petitions before boards and commissions in your packet, so you, you have all of that information, which I think is also something residents don't understand, is that you are receiving that.
In the packets for the boards and commissions?
Yes.
So the truth is, you know, I always, I generally look, I usually look at the agenda, I always look at the results, I don't always look at the packets. So, but that's intended to be information to us to know what the applications are, so I ought to be building that into my process, that I, that I take a look at those things and know exactly what's pending.
Right.
I guess if I'm looking at the agenda every time, I would be able to pick up on that.
Yeah, and particularly for anything I would say that's in your ward, where you're likely to get contacted by. But I would also say, back to Alderman Rumel's point, I would agree with you to a certain extent, the problem, again, I don't want to put Kathy on the spot that we're seeing, is that people are reaching out to you after they've attended the first public meeting. So they know the process is occurring, but they choose to then go in a different direction. I think that's what's disconcerting or challenging, certainly for Kathy and I. So Kathy, I'll shut up now.
Just a couple thoughts. Listening to you, one thought I had is that when we send out the public notice, maybe we do a simple graphic that gets attached to every public notice that talks about the process. So that's something we can do, because I think as, as Bob said, the residents sometimes are involved in a petition once, and they're, you know, we can do, we can, we have information on the website about the process, but they're not going to look for that. So that's one approach. I think the other thing we're seeing now, which we haven't seen before, is residents are calling and saying, "My alderman thinks this," or "My alderman has told me that," or "My alderman said this is going to happen." And, and that does make the plan commission or zoning board process difficult, because I, I think they're, they're coming in thinking they're, they're building support or reading a response from some of you that, that may not be accurate. So I think that's, that's the change we're seeing. So we can certainly enhance our notice to try and explain the process further.
And then, and then all of us being, I mean, I know, I mean frankly, I think it obviously is very relevant in our own wards, and I know we get copies of petitions in our own wards, but, you know, if I have friends who live in other wards, they're completely comfortable asking me questions about the city things and so on. And so I guess, I guess the other thing we could always do is if somebody calls us, we could ask them explicitly, is there something, has it already been filed before a board or commission? And I think we did that, didn't we? We've done that with a couple of issues where we say, "Please get back to us after the decision's been made by plan or BRB or whatever it is," and we'll, and then, and then, I mean, I've said that to a couple of people, and then I, and then I'll come and visit and so on, so. It seems like it's pretty tricky, a little bit tricky. But are we correct that some of this can be corrected even after the fact? If you've had an ex parte communication, if you disclose it and say that it did not influence your, your vote, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Let me offer you a situation that could rise to litigation. There is an ex parte contact. Neighbor X talks to the alderman about property Y owner's application, and property Y owner is denied, and they learn about this ex parte contact. Now they claim that their property rights were impacted because it was an improper contact about property X, or, you know, neighbor X's concerns that "if I had only a fair opportunity, I could have addressed and satisfied the council, but I was deprived of that right, and therefore my constitutional rights were violated." We don't want to have that. One of the ways to mitigate against that, I'm not going to say it's a cure, because someone can always allege something, but one way to mitigate against it is to have, you know, alderman Z said, "Oh yes, X contacted me about Y's application, and although I heard much from X, I don't think that has affected my ability to objectively and impartially review Y's application. I'm here to receive any more information that may come before the council. I've reviewed the application, I've reviewed the materials from the recommending body." And I think at that point, you have done a large measure to negate any claim that it has been a tainted process, because you've now disclosed it. And the, the opportunity for Y is to say, "Well, could you tell me what X told you?" And then you can disclose that, and then why has the opportunity to respond to that? You've at least put it back into the public process, given that person the opportunity to address the concerns that affect their property rights, and you've now minimized the risk of having somebody sue us over an ex parte contact. And I will tell you, many times, these are based on good decisions you've made that somebody doesn't like, and they will try to attack it in any which way they can.
Vic, you used the word "ex parte," and, you know, a lot of the things that are going before the plan commission, or the BRB, certainly the petitioners involved, the cities involved, the staff, to the extent, you know, it's a question of the impact on the community. And is the community now a party to that proceeding?
It's a public hearing. Anybody in the community can participate. So yes, we don't have standing requirements for someone to participate.
But then you, you get to what you just said on the ex parte, and again, I'm, I'm trying to focus in on what I'll call significant, very controversial issues that affect, that hundreds of people in your ward are involved in. And they do reach out to the councilmen, they do want to voice their complaints. And I know at times, like, for example, the, one of them, I won't go into the specifics, they did not understand the process at all. I had to explain that it is not a fait accompli, it's going through this review process, and it has another review process before it comes to the council. Although one of the things, if you're explaining the process to them, you do indicate that these are recommending bodies and the decision lies with the council. So going back to an earlier discussion, that may be also why they feel it's more important to talk to the councilmen than to talk to a board or commission. But because of the significance, you know, and I certainly don't have any compulsion to, you know, state that I've talked to a lot of people about these issues, listened to their complaints, tried to explain the process to them, and say that I'm still ready to listen to what the petitioner has to say, look at the record, look at what the plan commission say, look at the facts before us, and make an, you know, independent decision based upon those facts. Now, if I want to go back and try and remember who I talked to at what day and what time, for...
And I, I'm not suggesting it be that deliberate. I, and I will, I'll give you an example, because I had it happen in another community, thankfully not Lake Forest, where one of the members of the corporate authority decided it would be a good idea to hold his own meeting of anybody who's interested in a particular issue from a particular perspective. Thankfully, I found out about it before the meeting occurred, and I got him to cancel it, but he felt it was his responsibility to absorb everybody's viewpoints so that he could be fully informed, and he was doing it outside of the process. Had that happened, I am confident that we would have been sued, and I'm confident that that would have been a very close call. I, I don't see that as something that we have ever encountered to ever happen, so it's a close call situation. More particular to your question, from many residents, have reality, and to say when you have the recommendation or the like, that most commission recommendation or the zoning board, it's not going to be as exact, the described, is something that, that's something that, is, did, the, that all of you have, and create, nails are going to be, and they're going to be things that people can ask for. What we have tried to do, both as a matter of transparency, but also as a matter of fairness, is to make those available to all members of the council, as well as members of the public, so that there is that opportunity for dispelling any, you know, any rumors. I mean, there, there are things that people sometimes say out of misinformation or, or being uninformed, and the best way to try to address those things and to avoid the disappointment to people is to try to give them good, solid information that has been well-vetted in the public process.
I'm wondering if we can move on.
Any final questions, comments? Okay, since this was a discussion item, we'll move on to the next item, and that is agenda item number seven, item two, discussion on minimum legal sales age for tobacco products. And this item appears at the request of Alderman Rumel, so I would say that we had this on our agenda within the last year or so. But since you're bringing it forth through request, Alderman Rumel, why don't you take a quick moment to frame your interest in it?
Yes. This actually came to my attention because the county has passed a minimum smoking age of, you can't purchase tobacco under the age of 21, similar to the regulations for alcohol. And I read this article that I think was included in your packets, and what was compelling to me was this quote, and some others, that "to get people to quit is much more difficult, so anything we can do to prevent an individual from starting is so important." And that was from the commissioner of the Chicago Department of Public Health. And she goes on to say, "With the older age requirement, teens can no longer get their friends to purchase products for them." So when I think back on my high school experience and my children's high school experience, I think there's some value to having an age gap between students who are in high school still at the age of 18. Products as teens and by tobacco use among teens. Sir and other, and hard, I don't think, really, than, than alcohol consumption. And we increased that age to the age of 21, and so I don't see a reason why we aren't The city of Evanston, that has Northwestern University within its boundaries, has increased the tobacco age to 21, as have Highland Park, I believe Bannock Burn, Lincolnshire, I'm not sure about Vernon Hills. So a number of our surrounding communities have increased the tobacco age, and so I would like to propose that we consider maybe more research into this and perhaps...
Tobacco product in the city.
Jack?
Counterpoint. You know, we discussed this, it was discussed kind of via email, whether we would put this on an agenda maybe six to nine months ago, and, and I don't know what, whether, there was no vote or anything, but there was a kind of a position that we really don't want to get involved in this. And I just, I'll, I just pulled out a copy of the email that I wrote to Bob in response to his question about whether we should have it on the agenda. And it's, "I'm struggling with this position statement, because I do not believe it is the job, it is our job as city council to regulate human behavior unless it endangers the community at large. Quite frankly, I do not believe that smoking by 19-year-old, by 19-year-olds poses a threat to the citizens of Lake Forest. Further, 19-year-olds can vote, can serve in the armed forces in Afghanistan and Iraq, but they will not be able to buy cigarettes in Lake Forest. I actually, quite frankly, think that's ridiculous. I think this position statement is a triumph of ideology over common sense, and is nothing more than a good excuse for 19-year-olds to attempt to break the law. Furthermore, as I look at what's, and this is not part of the statement, as I look at what's going on in Cook County and in other parts of the United States, where they want local communities now, I mean, what's next? We set the minimum, we set minimum wages? Maybe we start discussing spousal leave? Maybe we do a POP or a soda tax? Okay? I don't think that's our job. I don't think that's our job at all, and I'd kind of like to nip this in the bud as an overall concept. I don't think that that is the city council's job of the city of Lake Forest. I don't think that that is the City Council's job of the city of Lake Forest.
Michelle?
I would add that I... Well, I don't think it's our job. I do... I'm completely comfortable suggesting that 19-year-olds not buy smoking, buy tobacco. But I don't feel the need for legislation. I don't think that's our purview.
I would support that as well. I don't think this is our role at all.
I would just say that governments do regulate these matters, just like they regulate the minimum age at which you can purchase alcohol. And I think it is a public health issue. And I think that anything we can do to keep smoking out of high schools is a step in the right direction. So, that's why I brought it before the council, because I do feel strongly about children smoking at a young age, not at the age of 18. And junior high at 15, 16, 15. Very difficult. I would just... Passionate about... It's a pretty insidious... I do think... Do question our role in... Compelled those other... I don't have a close... Make a recommendation about... To be better in... I guess that's where I am. To consider. I'm not sure. More stuff. I'm happy to read it.
I took some between... Let me ask a point of... Have a law that purchases cigarettes at 18? Is that correct? And who has that law? Is that a city law, or is that...
It's an Illinois statutory requirement right now.
And that applies then to all communities, including home-ruled communities?
No. It applies throughout the state. Home-ruled communities have the ability to extend that to 21.
Okay. But to the extent... What have we done here in Illinois in connection with the Illinois law? What have we done here in Lake Forest?
I believe that we are just in conformity with the Illinois age standards.
We enforce the Illinois law as applicable here, being under 18 prohibited.
Right.
And enforceable by the police. Okay.
Okay. Final comments? Okay. Next on the agenda, Item Eight, Additional Items for Council Discussion. Anything on anybody's mind? Seeing none. Then, Item Nine, A Agreement into Executive Session. Is this a motion?
So moved. For purposes of...
Something.
This would be a roll call. It's for purposes of...
Disposition of property and conservation.
Disposition of city property and sale or lease of property of the city.
You used to have that memorized.
I wanted to make sure I knew what we were going in there for.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Will the clerk make the roll call, please?
I missed the motion. I'm sorry.
Who made the motion?
Jack made the motion. I seconded it.
Thank you. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
And importantly, there won't be any further business following the executive session.
Aye, yea, zero nay. Motion carries.